All right, we'll call the town board meeting to workshop to order with a moment. I will call a roll.
Melissa.
Thank you, Mayor Owens. Mayor Owens?
Here.
Mayor Protim Selvi. Commissioner Clasold.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Mann, who reports that he will be joining us just a few minutes late. Commissioner Stetson.
Here.
And Commissioner Wixstrom.
Here.
All right, we have a forum. Can we have the adoption agenda? Someone make a motion.
Second.
The motion's second. We have adoption agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Ayes had it. All right, we have a consent agenda.
There are no items on the consent agenda, so we'll just move on to Department Head Presentations.
We'll just pass on. Okay. Okay, Melissa, you're sure.
Barry Wicker, Waterfront Operations. So, the Maritime Museum, we're in full swing, summertime. Our reduced sailing program's going really good. The next couple of things we have going on for the summer is our annual Wind Design Regatta. That's the week after next. We have kids coming from like New Bern, all up and down the Outer Banks also. And then on August 13th, we have our kids' fishing tournament, and we usually do about 100 kids for that also. So, we usually have about 20 or so sailors for the Wind Design Regatta. Volunteers are still working, even though it's hot outside. We had 128 hours of volunteers this past month, back in June. Marina in June, we did about 71 transient boats. Their average night stay is still about four nights. People are kind of staying over, and we had 17 boats canceled due to weather. And that's what's going on down the waterfront. Thanks. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
We ended our fiscal year 2122 on June 30th, and since then, we have been in the middle of closing out that year in the Finance Department and getting things set up for the new year, which started July 1st. We are preparing for our audit, which is scheduled for the end of August. Interviews for our vacant accounting technician position have been underway, and hopefully it will be filled by the end of the month. And we did receive an estimated conversion date from Southern Software for our new financial software system to be about January of 2023, and that, it seems like a long ways out, but that date happens to be the perfect storm of payroll, quarterly billing, monthly billing, and final bills all happen at that same time. So, that is the date that fits all of those criteria for us to be able to get trained on the new system for all of those reports. And also, we did get great news from the North Carolina Capital Management Trust that our rates are going up, and so that's a great thing for the town's investments that we have in there. Do you guys have any questions? Thank you all.
Good evening, Chief Haskett, Manio Police Department. Myself and Lieutenant Eiler attended a police advisory board meeting and also a FlexCAD inter-local agreement meeting at NAGS Head Police Department. I attended training for enhancing community engagement and training on submersive groups. Investigator Moore attended Week One of Crime Scene Investigations at the North Carolina Justice Academy in Salemburg. Officer Deaton attended online watch for me, North Carolina training. Officer Rhodes attended at-scene traffic crash training through North Carolina Justice Academy. Officer Lassen also attended that as well as intro to traffic crash training. Officer Grogan attended intro to crash training as well as at-scene traffic crash too. We all assisted, of course, with Dare Days. The Dare Days events went really well with no problems, no issues, no major issues anyway. Parking was a little bit of a problem, but that was resolved. The Juneteenth event at P. Island Cook House went very well. Lieutenant Eiler, Moore, Grogan, Lassen, and Sergeant Burrows attended that. We had 30 citations, 22 investigations, 16 have been closed and cleared, and six are still active. We had 14 ordinance violations. Self-initiated calls for June were 1,803 dispatched, 177 with a total of 1,980 calls. And that is all I have. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds pretty good.
Could I, could I, Chief? Just one minute, Josh. Where are you with your studies with the speeding thing? Have you started, has state started, or you started your study on the speeding demand here yet?
I'm still working with DOT on that.
Okay. You're working, y'all working, okay.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to work through it. It's still alive and well, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, Josh.
Thank you. Good evening, Josh O'Brien, Water and Sewer Department. As always, starting with the service installations and operations billing snapshot for June shows that 811 locates were up, double the average monthly number due to the ongoing fiber project for bright speed. We've seen a lot more than normal, like I said, about double, and that is still ongoing. Staff are continuing to paint and service fire hydrants, sometimes taking the hydrants down to bare metal, priming and painting them. Overall, for June, we saw it was a busy month for both billing work orders as well as reactive and preventive maintenance assigned work. The 2021 Annual Drinking Water Consumer Quality Report is now available online. The document can be found by navigating the town website to the Water and Sewer Department page under Water Information, then choosing Water Quality Reports by tab or under Resources. We have 10-plus years of our water quality reports listed on our website as well. One carries to look in the past as well as 2021. We will be publishing the 2021 slash 2022 wastewater performance report toward the end of next month and be put online in August. We saw both water and sewer main repairs in June as well as a few service line repairs. The middle two pictures on the slide show repair to a past terracotta sewer main, terracotta clay sewer main that was on John Bordle Street that had been repaired more than 20 years ago. You can see what terracotta looks like as opposed to bright green fancy sewer main. Again, we do have a lot of the terracotta clay mains still in town in the old section downtown. Completed two wet well cleanings in June at Cypress Cove and Bowser Town Pump Station. Picture all the way to the bottom right shows the wet well at Bowser Town Pump Station. We contracted a certified confined space entry cleaning crew and rescue team for the well cleaning. You can see this little white log that a person 30 foot down as well. It's a permanent confined space, which is the reason why we contracted the cleaning crew and back truck. They actually came in from Wilmington, they didn't put on the job. What they did, of course, is similar to what we do on our shallower wet wells, but the 30-foot depth of the well, they removed all the fat oils and grease from the walls and the water line, settled grit at the bottom of the tank, wet wipes, paper and plastic products that were built up on both of the submersible pumps and power leads, which were, of course, removed by the back truck as well. This is always my chance to say it, wipes fog pipes, fat oils and grease is not good for the sewer system, so please don't flush wipes or fat oils and grease or fogs, we call it, put them in the trash can where they fall. Thank you. And lastly, at the wastewater treatment plant, we have a couple pictures. We completed the June sludge haul via contractors we do twice a year. Just under 250,000 gallons of stabilized sludge was removed. Shows the middle left picture there, that's our sludge holding lagoon with the two mix and areas. You can see staff following protocol, get inside the tank and push the sludge into a contracted truck into the bin. So, we also take the opportunity to check mechanic equipment inside the tank. Not a pretty job, but an important job. Also, at the plant, we completed influent and effluent pump, prevented maintenance, replacing wear rings, both impellers on the influent pumps. We also replaced the microstrainer motor and gear reducer at the headworks, which is the bottom left picture there. That device is designed to remove all those items that shouldn't be flushed to the system. Just so happened to be that we had to replace the motor that controlled that device to remove the screenings that were called in by putting a new motor and gear reducer in there and burying the blow on the inside motor. So, it's functioning as designed. And that's all I have for the month of June. Unless there are any questions.
Josh, how about the ultraviolet upgrade? Is that going?
Yes, sir. We're still in the first process meeting, the first milestone of reengineering and working on the preliminary report. So, we believe that milestone that was agreed to be pushed back till the end of August. So, we actually have a progress meeting tomorrow on the water pump station project where we will be discussing that as well, but we're looking good so far. Any other questions?
I have a quick one. We have Vacation Bible School, and we have a big hole, and you guys fixed it really quickly. The little boys at Vacation Bible School would like to know how long it took.
Okay, good question.
Well, they also want to know if you have a social media account where you shared videos of you repairing the hole. Tell them if you do, but how long did it take?
Okay, honestly, it didn't take too long in that case. That was just a washout next to a manhole, so the actual washout was only about a foot and a half. So, the staff put it out, I'd say hour to do that one, so that one wasn't too bad.
They were impressed.
Thank you for the comment, and I'll make sure to pass it on as far as social media. We are not that advanced. Maybe in a perfect world, a few years, maybe we could pursue that. All right, thank you.
Hey, Josh.
Frankie Wood, Public Work Director. For the month of June, we prep for the 4th of July event by setting up the stage at COA and at the Cook House, placing bleachers, tents, chairs, tables, and games in designated areas, setting up water barriers and barricades as needed, and clean up after every event each day, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We also clean the dish between Darrell's and the Christmas shop. We trimmed and ed sidewalks, removed the excess dirt from Town Commons Bath Airhouse area, installed new picnic tables from downtown to Cartwright Park, and continue cleaning along the causeway. And also, we installed wall protectors in the men's room bathroom at the pavilion underneath the hand dryers. Thank you.
Carl Woody, IT Department. So, I'd like to start off my slides with cyber training. Last month, we talked about, or the video was about an inside threat. So, the threat didn't come from outside, but it came from inside that caused the outside folks to come in. So, as far as cybersecurity training, it's everybody should be involved. If you see something, say something. If you see somebody trying to get by security, say something. So, first action item was take action. Cybersecurity is everyone's responsibility. Protecting your organization is about taking action when needed. Be on the lookout. Bypassing security protocols such as plugging an unauthorized device, turning off layers of security like two-factor authentication are forms of insider threat. And finally, there are real consequences for this. In the video, they talked about Nvidia, which is a video card company that got compromised, and hundreds of thousands of accounts were stolen. So, while the malicious insider in this episode was let off easy with just community service, punishments for such actions can be quite harsh, so think before you act. We're still working on the interactive kiosk for the Maritime Museum. We do have an upgrade to the cemetery software, so what this will allow, people that are looking for a grave, they can be able to search online to find it, and if they find it, they can get walking directions right to their phone, so they know where to walk to find the grave. So, it's pretty neat stuff, so that's all I have. Any other questions?
We had our planning board meeting that heard saga of proposal for saltwater landing. It included 22 condos remaining. That was approved. As long as they met five conditions, which bumping up landscaping on floors. Must complete a traffic study. And team provided a letter to town of the neighboring properties that they're aware of the law coverage. And to any recommendations of our part. And then for the Town Commons Bathroom, it's moving across the area, crossing in electric now. 29th Vinegar Drive. That is a new construction ahead of Grand Pirates Cove. We received a complaint of June, around June 21st. They've received a notice here of a pretty good amount, which are believed to be in violation of the camera permit. They made an inspection on the 22nd, contacted KAMA, and they made their inspection on the 23rd and found their minor development permit to be in violation as well as concrete decking that should have been voided or slashed, but they issued a stop on that. How we have violations collected since then, they have been, CO have been issued, and now they have 14 days after CO. That's all.
Matt, I was just going to ask you a question. I know Melissa and I discussed it this morning. When I was coming back down the main road last night, I thought it was a DOT sign, and it looks like a DOT sign. It's orange, but it was advertising car wrecks, boat wrecks, awnings. So, I mean, I think the sign thing has kind of crept out of control, not only on the main road, but downtown, along the boardwalk. And I know you've got a lot on your plate, but I think at some time, you know, it needs to be addressed again because it is getting out of control.
Yes, I've contacted the.
The shop.
Clock man.
Clock man.
I was informed that they would know if they're still there. That's a good sign.
Okay, well, it's that one, and I know everybody here has noticed, you know, it went from years ago, no signs, which, I mean, I know people having barbecues and special events and fundraising events, it's fine. I don't have a problem with that, but it's just each week and each month, I see more sandwich boards, which I have a sandwich board, but it does fit underneath the footprint of my building. I always put it in the ramp. But I just think that at some point, when you get caught up, that's something that you might want to deal with.
I will.
All right, thank you.
So, that concludes Department Head Reports, but I had a few updates that I wanted to share with you all. We did receive the completed renderings of the pump station that's currently under construction. So, there are three different views. This is the first one. What do you, if you want to? That is the second one. And that is the third one. So, I wanted to show these to you all. Y'all have seen the draft ones last meeting, but these are the complete ones. We have them available in a very high-resolution file, and so tomorrow, we'll post them on the website so folks can see them, and I will send the link that we've created so our friends in the media can grab them and share them through their resources as well. I did give Ms. Goodlow Murphy a thumb drive, so she's got those available for the Coastline Times this evening too, but this is, I think, going to be helpful. We'll get some, we're going to, we're going to get them printed and put out on the signs that are existing out there so that folks can also see. So, I felt obligated to show these to you first, but we'll start getting them out in the community beginning tomorrow.
That's great. That's great. Did you get it to the little old ladies at the frozen shops on that corner?
Yes, sir. That's my plan, first thing in the morning.
Well, I was getting mad too. I'll tell a little story. There was that house, and there was another house right beside it that blocked the whole view, a little house. And I said, "That house can't be there." And sure enough, it was. I thought it for another part of the wastewater treatment system. Come find out, it was a cubicle that was building on the side, and they lifted it up with a crane and set it on top, so it may have fooled I me. That's going to look good.
It is. It is. So, that concludes Department Head Reports, and the next item on the agenda is Item 5, which is public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions or take any action on items brought up during this period. Speakers will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please come forward to the lectern and identify yourself so your statements can be recorded.
All right, now's the time of public comment period. Would anyone like to be heard? I'm sorry. It's public comment period, you can't.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the only time you're allowed to speak, baby. You know that.
Baby Woody, White Doane, Manio, North Carolina. And I know that you guys are going to be addressing some of the issues on the medical situation that we're dealing with, and I want to commend this group for taking this on because our island is in desperate need, and you're leading the way, and that's as it should be. There are a couple of things I just want to point out that I would like to share with The health and drug issues that we're dealing with here on the island, and I can personally speak to a grandson who, for all intents and purposes, is now lost pretty much to us due to drugs and is walking the streets. I have a granddaughter, and this is kind of stretching a little, but she was studying to be in the medical profession and has decided to step away from it for a while because she doesn't feel like that she's learning what should be learned to be able to take care of patients when they're turned over to her. So, I think our education system should be a concern where it comes with these things. And, you know, it's just, it's important. Like, there are other issues, and I know there are, just getting medical help to senior citizens, to indigent people, to people who have no money, but to be able to have some source. I had a lady approach me yesterday, and her daughter was in middle school, and her daughter is asking for help, counseling, because she's overwhelmed with going back to school. What that means, she's not being in school. The whole scenario is frightening to them, and they can't find someone that can help her or that can counsel her. So, I appreciate what you guys are attempting to undertake, hopefully, and would encourage you to think beyond the box. Make sure our community is taken care of, and I appreciate everything you're doing. Thanks.
Thank you. One more time. Anyone else? We now declare a public comment period closed.
Okay, Item 6A on your agenda is consideration and approval of pay plan amendments, and we do have one edit to add to the pay plan that we provided to you all, which is in grade 11. We need to add a 1 behind wastewater treatment plant operator. But this is, this is kind of the first step in a number of things that I would like to accomplish moving forward, getting things, getting, housekeeping items. So, we have an issue where there are titles that are associated with individuals who work for the town in our payroll system that don't match what's on the pay plan. So, by the approval of this pay plan, we're making that situation better. And so, we're also adding the COLA to these, to the, to the pay scale as well. We had some work to do. Typically, I would put this in front of you when you do the budget, but we had this homework that we wanted to get right, so that's why it's coming to you now and not with the budget a few meetings ago. I'm happy to answer any questions.
We need a motion to clear it up.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any comments?
I just have a question. I don't know the pay scale from low to high, correct? So, who decides on that employee, where it should be on the high end and the low end? I mean, does that come to us before it's finalized?
No. So, our employees are paid somewhere between the hiring rate and the maximum rate based on their classification, the classification in which they fall. When we're hiring, I make the decision of where that person, based on their experience and all those things, falls within those ranges.
Okay. Any other questions?
After some of the years that you've had the upgrade happening.
Well, most, so, most departments in recent years have worked on like career progression plans, so there are a number of things that they can do to get to the next level, but it's mostly based on training and certifications and the such.
So, every year, they don't get a, every year, they don't get a stat that's based on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I've got a question. Just breezing over it, I see a lot of positions in there, but I don't see your position. Are you not included in the 3.5% COLA?
I, no. I excluded myself from that, but.
I understand why you did that, but I would, in my opinion, gas is the same price for you as it is for my health, so I think you deserve to be in that 3.5% COLA just as well as the other employees. That's my suggestion.
Okay. But related to my title not being on the pay plan, we went back and looked at previous pay plans, and it does not appear that the town manager has been listed on that, and I think Ben is.
That's pretty consistent. The town manager works for you. Everyone else works for the town manager.
I understand.
So, she, you get to define the ranges of pay scales of various pay classifications, but she defines, decides who fits where and how much each person gets paid.
To answer your question a little bit further, Commissioner.
In other words, if we wanted to set our pay plan or if we wanted to raise our pay, we would have to vote on it?
Yes, sir. So, any changes to Melissa's would be separate from the policy, but it's something you can certainly do, and you can do it anytime.
Any other questions? All right, can we have a motion on consideration of the approval of the. Motion is second to consideration of the pay plan as presented by the town manager. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Both? I is having motion carries.
Okay. Item 6B on your agenda is consideration and appointment of the healthcare. I'm minimizing the title here. On the agenda, it says Local Manio Medical Practice Task Force, but we're just gonna summarize that to be the Healthcare Task Force.
Who came up with that long?
I've had a conversation with, with the author. I think, I think he would agree we could shorten it, right?
Yes.
Okay. So of course, at your last meeting, you all appointed Mr. Malcolm Fearing to head this task force, and we have worked together and consulted a number of people, and we do have a slate of individuals that have, that we are recommending to you. You should have a list, and they're up here behind us too, but you have a list to look at. I don't know if you all want to hear from Mr. Fearing at this time, or if you have other individuals that you would like to recommend, but...
Let's hear from Malcolm.
I think it's perfect we hear from the chair.
Sure.
After you finish, because I'm not cutting you off.
No, no, I'm finished.
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is an unusual situation, being able to stand when you don't have a clock. I like, um, we all gave you this job, I really pammed, I voted out of some judgment, maybe she didn't live. And there's a lot has happened in this, and I'll try to summarize this as quickly as I can. And I want to summarize it with Loop 10, 25 through 37, and even Ruth couldn't remember what that was, as scholarly as she is, and the reason I remember it, although Dan, our pastor thought, right, the story of Miss Smith. If y'all remember that story. There was an individual on the side of the road that needed help, and two people passed him by, and it took a third to take him in, house him, feed him. And that's what you all are doing now, I believe, is God's work in addressing the healthcare. Because everywhere I go, there's somebody that comes up to me and talks to me about the circumstances that we're in. And, and in doing so, I gave careful consideration, trying to, myself and Melissa and Bobby Adams gave careful consideration about the initial format of a group of our people. And in doing so, it needed to be, it suggested it be initially a small, smaller group, okay? Smaller group, technical input from public, and if you see the names of the group, this is how we can collect. I asked Tash Judge, who's chairman of the hospital, who represents, not only the audience, we give out ideas, really east of City of Hill, and Chesapeake. So she represents both of those groups. I asked this judge, who do you think should be on the task force? She's the first one to raise her hand and say, "I'll help." And in doing so, she recommended number, Amy Montgomery, who's the number two person at the hospital. So she's, the two people that came from the hospital are willing to serve for your consideration. I asked Kevin Phillips, a young pharmacist, just following this, practicing pharmacist, would he serve? Immediately, he said, "Yes, I would." Why Kevin, who's on the health department, who serves on the health department, but also he fills the prescriptions? So the people that I talked to, one of their main concerns is, is how do they get prescriptions to them without throwing a diet? So that's the reason Kevin, I'm very glad, his name for consideration. Schools, I asked the chairman of the board of education, since the schools on Rhode Island have several families, students, which have maybe as many primary care concerns, but they also have, maybe some counseling, little health addiction concerns, they suggested Lisa Williams. I think everybody, most everybody knows Lisa, that's Jay's wife, yeah, living around the island all the time. And she's a counselor within the school, so she knows the children or the young adults. Bob Wood, I asked him who he thinks should serve. He responded very quickly, Jim Tobin. Jim Tobin is the mainland county commissioner. So that gives, and he also comes over to Rhode Island to his area representation, but that also gives the mainland some reference and attention too, as far as the county commissioners. Bueller Ashford, who knows Bueller, but she's a neighbor, she's been involved for a long, long time. She actually assisted, uh, student, assistant. But she also was on the hospital. Bueller also represents the community. So Bueller knows the community, but also she has some familiarity with the workings of the hospital. Dr. Sheila Davis, Bobby also, Bob Wood suggested to have representation of the health department to ask her if she would, Doc, serve, and she is, her name is, as someone. And then, and the second bullet of, from five is his new guy, Randy. I didn't know Randy. Here he is right here tonight, this second or third meeting he's attended. I'm thinking, here, oh, here we go. Somebody new, and tell us how it happened in Wisconsin, Hockley, Pennsylvania. And I met with Randy today, and I say that a little tongue in cheek. Let me tell you a little bit about Randy. Of course, the group that you have up there now, we all know each other, okay? But what Randy will bring, and I've known him for maybe 10 minutes, it didn't take that late a college for me to say that I think he needs to be there, because he has a 30,000-foot view of healthcare. He was a health attorney, a policy advocate in Washington D.C. His lawyer, he asked me not to say that, but that was his practice, is patient advocacy. So on this board, we have a volunteer that's come forward that's new to our community and said, "I want help." And his help has credentials with him. So he is someone that I'm also recommending to you for your consideration. Now, what, what we don't have is members of your board, of who on your board would like to serve. I've talked to a couple of board members that are willing to serve, and that needs to come from your board to me, of who you all would like to have. So in wrapping this up, and one of the commissioners asked me about, what are we gonna be thinking about? And my response was this, it doesn't need to be my thinking, it needs to be your task force thinking, okay? When we meet and organize, we will determine the direction that the task force should go, because you have very competent people that will serve, that have diversity and complexity of this issue. But these are three bullet points, and I'm very glad you're dealing with, I'd like you all to know about. One is, the number one is patient care. And in that patient care, what we've heard the loudest is primary care, okay? The clinic is not open, and that's your primary care. But as you've heard tonight, in patient care, that's also more, that's addiction, because these are parts of the whole that we would try to identify the solutions to. The other, second bullet would be retention and recruitment, retention of healthcare personnel that are presently in the system, and the recruitment, as we have a young doctor here that's attended every single meeting, Harrison, recruitment of other healthcare professionals. And then the third bullet would be facilities, and that would be immediate and long-term. Now, this is, and I think that's important for you to know, the, the initial bullet points, and I welcome additional input from this board, of what you all think that your constituent, constituents would be interested also. So that is not a complete recommendation, but that is my recommendation, and waiting members from your board. Any questions?
When would you like this task force to have its first meeting?
As soon as possible. I think that's what Mayor Dr. Tim Tobin, at the last meeting, is this needs to happen as soon as possible.
We need the approval and appointment of the Board of Commissioners to establish the task force, and then we also need a member from this board to be on the task force.
Mayor, excuse me, before we go, you're just...
I'm not doing anything, go ahead.
Oh, okay. All right.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Great. Because I think this is a really important step tonight, that we set this healthcare task force up, because this will assist the town in vetting, you know, multiple concepts and ideas that are bubbling up out there about what could be a better way for our residents to receive healthcare. But I will have to tell you, I, I've received questions about what it means, what this looks like, how to interface, and so I wanted to, for my own clarification, so that as I go forward, I can give the right information to residents when they do ask me, and that is, I just wanna make sure that I understand the process, because the process comes from us. And so, help me understand. So the healthcare task force will identify and better define these healthcare needs of our public. And then they will also then review, analyze, and make a careful examination of the ideas and concepts proposed by residents and citizens regarding the healthcare need. So these are what, this is how I perceive this. Anyway, so then after the research and the discussions are completed, and recommendations are made by this group, then these written recommendations go to the town staff, I would imagine. The town manager would be a part of those meetings. I don't see her name on there, but obviously, that's the connection with Manio. And then at that point, these are my questions, at that point, I would imagine then that our town staff will have an opportunity to review the written recommendations and review them further with the consideration of any governmental or legal or financial implications that might exist, and then add those to the recommendations, add that information to the recommendations that are put forward. And then, so that, these other considerations, that would then go to the Board of Commissioners. And then, once the Board of Commissioners receives these recommendations, we'll have an opportunity to discuss them, and then maybe ask for public comment. So I'm looking for the process, and then I, so is that everybody else's understanding of this process?
I'm sure we're all on target.
Everybody else is on target?
I can't speak to nobody but me. Nothing that's helping to progress.
That's how we progress. That's how everybody is, okay. Great. So that makes perfect sense to me. I'm, feel confident being able to make that clear to folks who ask me, you know, what is their role. So then the other questions that bubble up for me are, so how does the public then move? By the way, before I say that, I just wanna say, there have been such fantastic ideas that have come from this group that I have heard, so I would imagine that those would be ideas that, that this group would vet and look at, consider. But also, how will this group capture other public concepts and ideas? How will they do that? Do they come to a meeting? So I would imagine we would be setting meetings here. People, they will be advertised like our other meetings, they'll be on our website. And so folks can come here, and maybe there would be a comment period? Or how would, how will we make sure that our residents are able to get their potentially good ideas to this group for examination as well?
Can I address that? First, I'd like to address the healing part. I've talked to town manager, and the logistical part of the meeting is something that we have talked about. And would you like to...
Sure.
Right?
Either, either way.
Okay. Well, describing of minutes is something that, that record keeping is something that we have talked about, and Melissa has offered that as a service to the community. So there would be minutes, and that would be, my guess would be communicated to you, should be communicated to your board at every meeting that's here, okay? There would be a public envision, a public address to the board, public comments. But beyond that too, we have talked about a website where people could reach out to the task force for people that can't attend to them, okay? That would like to have the input, okay? So, and I don't know how that looks like, because when...
We have to work through that.
Kimball and Pac-Man got lost, but Melissa seems that she...
So those, those comments would then go to you, so that you can keep a record of who has, I mean, people will wanna know that their voices are heard, so I just wanna make sure that they can.
Yes, that's right. And, and we, we need to work through how that technology works. If it's my email address or a form on a website that somebody can submit, we will, we wanted to get the task force in place. Tomorrow, we will query folks to get on their schedule to make that happen and work on the technology end of things as well. We will, we will be adding, so this, this will have a dedicated page on our website. And as soon as that portion of the website is stood up, I'll email the link to you all so y'all can share with your constituents.
Another que, great. These are all really good technical aspects that I appreciate knowing, so I can pass those on. Another question I've gotten, and I don't know that we would know the answer to this yet, but is a timeline, sort of a date certain that, so that, you know, it's not like a year out or two years out, but a timeline of, you know, when recommendations might come forward and...
I think as recommendations are made by the task force, I will bring them to you after having appropriately vetted them through the town attorney or whatever those questions might arise by how, how does government do whatever the things that might be included in the recommendations? That's the important piece that... That's the important piece, that after they come from the task force, I will package all of that together and bring it to you, so it's not just, oh, well, they had this recommendation. Hopefully, we'll offer you some solutions with the recommendation as well.
That's great, that's great. And then we'll have a commissioner as well, who can keep us updated along with, with you, who expect, will attend every meeting that, that this group has. That's, that's great, I appreciate that.
Mr. Commissioner, can I clarify, the here, the here, I believe we are agreeing that the county, the county has offered meeting space, okay? And I think we are agreeing to pursue one of their meeting rooms, not the commissioner's meeting, because they have two different rooms that accommodate a meeting in private, where there's a private, have inter, here, interaction, people coming in and out. And also, the main thing has technology in rooms, because I believe there will be people that will talk to the committee from outside of our county, tip of course, state, and maybe enormous, or be, be into a meeting, and they have that technology, uh, there to, to, but that's something we've talked about, and we all have a feeling about that, I'd like to know that, but that's the direction we believe we're going to go there, is to use them in space.
Well, I would imagine the more information that people can, can digest, the better. So if, if you're talking about videotaping those, or making the, the experts that come in and have a conversation, I think the public would like to have access to that.
I agree. Totally transparent.
Well, and great information, yeah. So that we, we can all get smarter, Malcolm. That's, that's, I think, one of the important things that we're going to learn here. I think we're all going to get smarter about what our options are, what we can do. So, I appreciate that. Thank you. Those are really the questions I have.
So we will have one board commissioner, I think we need two for clarity.
I'd like to move a suggestion for one. If the board's up there, I'd like to suggest Mayor Perkins, Sylvan, to be on.
I concur.
Ms. Adams? If Ms. Adams will accept the Betty Sylvan by acclamation, we won't have the vote. If we're all set on Betty Sylvan as the board member, or one of the board members, whatever you want to do, we'll just accept her by acclamation, everybody in favor. All right, Betty, you're there.
And if you want to consider a second, is there-
I think we need a second.
I would agree.
Yeah, and I would, I would like, and I'm tired, I mean, fresh off the, fresh, what is it, the new kid on the block?
The new, been around?
All right, Todd Casole's name, been remembered as a second, named as a second, appointee to the, to the task force, is any other names to be submitted? Likewise, could we have Todd by acclamation? All right, we're the board, all right, all in favor of Todd, say aye. All right, we accept Todd by acclamation, we have our two members. Now, I'd like to say something. I would, I hope I don't make nobody mad, try not. I hope we can give this task force complete autonomy, without too much meddling from everybody, and let them do their job, let them do their work. Of course, we'll have, as I think Sherri alluded to, they will have the answer to us. But I'm too busy, I don't want to meddle, and I don't want to know what they're doing just as long as we're getting there. But I really think that the more everybody says aye, the faster, the better it's going to be, and let the task force do its job. Now, I assume you will be meeting with the commissioners occasionally, whether you, you set your time, your date, you're going to have to do all that through the mechanics of the task force. But then you'll be ready to go, and somebody will keep the board informed. Of course, there's six of us, seven of us here, and you can't be running to the board every day about something. I don't know how the others feel about it.
I report you all as often as you all would like us to do so, because, and I need to hear from you, and send this to Karen too, this is subservient to your board. This task force is subservient to your board. That's going to be true with everybody.
I think the communication, communication we get from managers gets, and we email things like that, and also keep the board up to date.
We, we can't, you can't be answering to seven people, because seven people are not going to agree on everything.
Well, and as Melissa relayed-
That's what I, if Melissa, Melissa is the liaison to this board, and I think that was a little too much, Sherri.
And if there's a dedicated section on the website that we can kind of keep everybody up to date, I think that's a big help too.
All right. Can we start on devotion, for task?
So can we just say, the task force that is listed in front of us, in the addition of Betty and myself?
We've already voted on that one.
Okay, so I guess-
Well, but for the entire rest of the task force, yes, yes, we need to do that.
I'll make a motion to appoint the above names to the task force.
All right, is there a second? Motion is second, we appoint, we, that we've appointed the family task force as approved by the town commissioners. All in favor? Aye. Close? Ayes have it, good, we have our task force, we're on the way.
Thank you, Malcolm.
The next item on the agenda is a closed session to consult with the town attorney in order to preserve attorney-client privilege. So we'll need a motion from you all.
All right, we have our motion, go in closed session.
Make a motion when you enter closed session.
Second? Moving, second, we go in closed session, as requested by the town manager. All in favor, say aye. Close? Ayes have it. For the public, for some of y'all who don't know, we have to go in closed session for a few minutes. Normally, we go in any room, and y'all can sit here and wait until we make a decision or talk about what we're going to talk, can't make a decision in there, until we come out to make the decision. And y'all can sit and wait, and I don't know what it's about, I have no idea, or if you want to get up and be excused, because this is the last part of the official meetings, the town commissioner comments, and mayor comments, if you want to hear them. But if you want to sit here and just wait, that's your privilege, but it's easier for us to go out and y'all sit here and be comfortable, if you want to. So, letting you know what we're doing, for the newcomers. And welcome aboard, we're glad you're in, Manny, all of you. All right, let's go into closed session. We have to declare ourselves out of executive session. Ben, where'd he go?
He's sleeping.
Ben, and do you do it before or after, tell them what we talked about?
After you make the motion close.
Okay, can we have a motion to declare ourselves out of executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion, second, we declare ourselves out of executive session. Ben, describe what we talked about.
Mr. Mayor, we met and considered some privileged attorney-client privileged matters, and discussed those, and gave direction to me on how to address them.
All right, that's in the rulebook, you have to do that. You tell, tell them what you talked about, but you still can't tell them what you talked All right, let's go. Mayor comments, I don't have anything. I, I will say something, I'm really proud of where this town is going and looking at it. It's clean, thanks to our staff, you heard from the wastewater people. And I would like to remind you, our system is about fifty to sixty years old, and it is on crutches. So we're going to have to start looking in the future to improvement to our whole system, and it's going to be a little bit expensive, but we can't keep running from it, and we just need to grab hold someday and hold on, make a move. That's all I got to say. Ruth?
I just want to give a lot of appreciation and thanks to the people that are willing to serve on this task force. I know it's going to be a lot of work, but it's really noble. And also, just prayers from the community, and continued love and support to the family of the young man who is undergoing surgery that went through the boating accident, and just a reminder to stay safe on the water, please. It's a wonderful blessing that we all get to learn to drive on boats first around here, and even drive them to high school. So, just stay safe.
Okay, Betty?
I have nothing other than to agree what to say. Kind of man here is growing by the brown, would be a notice, and I appreciate that.
Sherri?
Um, nothing.
Eddie?
No, sir, thank you.
Todd?
Not really, but the one thing I would bring up that I think this board needs to address sooner than later is what we're going to do with Agnoia Market, because I think it's turned into a hangout for a bunch of mischief, and it's probably one of the nicest pieces of property in town. And I think we need to go ahead and work on a plan with Melissa, and I know you had talked about maybe having a rendering or basically growing. What we could do, because it is, it's a beautiful piece of property, and I just think it's not utilized. And I know we've, we've tried a lot of things, and I just think what we've tried isn't what needs to be there, so, that's it. That's all I've got to say.
Okay, Darrell?
I don't have anything, but I have him there.
All right, that's sweet to the point. All right, we will adjourn until when? We adjourn to our regular meeting August 3rd at six thirty? At six thirty. Anything come for the board? Adjourn.